All right, how's everybody doing? Oteb, hey, this is Michael M. Oteb, founder of the African History Network, host of the African History Network Show. It is Friday, November 22nd, 2019. And we are live. So I hope everybody's doing well today. So everybody share this broadcast on your Facebook page, invite your friends to tune in as well. So I saw some articles dealing with this story around about a month ago, right around October 22nd, October 23rd, 24th. And I posted a couple of articles dealing with this topic. But I didn't get a chance to do a broadcast about it, been so busy and was in and out of town. But this deals with a school district in North Carolina, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board of Education. And many of you all saw this story, but I'm going to go deeper into this story. This deals with the school board voting down a mandatory African-American history course, voting down adopting a mandatory African-American history class, okay? And I did a lot of research on this, I read a number of articles, I looked at some local news sources also to find out why the mandatory high school course was voted down, okay? So we're going to deal with that now. What is oftentimes left out of the narrative is that they already had a cultural infusion class, or quote "cultural infusion" course. And they voted to expand that, the infusion program, the cultural infusion program. They voted to expand the cultural infusion program while they tried to get more data and more research on having a mandatory African-American history class, okay? And I'm going to share some additional information dealing with this, all right? Okay, so everybody share this broadcast on your Facebook page, invite your friends to tune in. And then African-American business owners, post a name of your business here on the thread of the broadcast. We'll let you know how you can advertise with the African History Network. And also we'll let you know how you can register for the online course that I teach, Ancient Kemet, the Moors and the Mahafa, Understanding the Transatlantic Slave Trade, What They Didn't Teach You in School, okay? So this is a 13-week, 26-hour online course that I teach, dealing with thousands of years of history. All right, so let's look at this here. First article I want to look at was the first one that I saw. And this is from October 22nd, 2019, from the Spectrum Local News, spectrumlocalnews.com. "School Board of Education Votes Against African-American History Class." "School Board of Education Votes Against African-American History Class," all right? And let me flip over to, yeah, here we go. Okay, I've got it here. So, let's see, is this the right one? Spectrum, yeah, this is the right one. So the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board, County School Board of Education has voted against a proposed mandatory African-American history class. So the vote was seven to one against the class. There were 28 speakers and one city council member who all spoke in favor of this class. Now, the district already has an infusion program that includes African-American studies. So council members voted on a proposed mandatory African-American history class. During the four-hour meeting, 28 people signed up to speak and all 28 spoke in favor of the class, including one city council person. Once the proposal was shot down, neighbors began to walk out of the meeting. So you had one person who is a teacher there at North Forsyth High School. His name is Gary Robinson. And he said, "We teach British literature in the 12th grade. How many people in our classrooms are north, at North Forsyth are of British descent?" Zero. For us not to accept the fact, for us not to accept the fact, for us not to accept the fact that our students deserve to learn about themselves for at least one credit when they get it and for other credits, to me is just not right, okay? And he's a teacher there at North Forsyth High School. Now, the seven board members who rejected the proposal said they needed more time and more data. Instead, the board unanimously approved an infusion program which would include African-American studies. So they are, they approved the expansion of the infusion program. And the expansion was suggested by the superintendent, the new superintendent, who started in September of 2019. Her name is Angela P. Hairston. She's African, she's an African-American female. She suggested the expansion of the infusion program, which I'm going to talk about here as well. The sole, the only board member to vote in favor of the mandatory African-American history course argued that the district already has an infusion program and this is just a vote to enhance it, all right? So that was the first article I saw about this. And then I studied, you know, doing some more research, okay? So let me, I'm going to give you the links to these articles. I'm also going to give you some more information like information regarding this 50, 56-page study from the Southern Poverty Law Center called Teaching Hard History: American Slavery, Teaching Hard History: American Slavery, which documents how the history of slavery in this country is being mistaught in schools across the country and how to better teach the history of, how to better teach the history of slavery, okay? And the, it deals with the do's and don'ts. Like slavery enactments is a big don't, okay? Even though I still hear stories about school districts doing slavery enactments, I really don't know why they're still doing this, okay? So that is Teaching Hard History: American Slavery from the Southern Poverty Law Center. And I'll give you the link for that also, right? Then African-American business owners email us at customerservice@afghanhistorynetwork.com, customerservice@afghanhistorynetwork.com will let you know how you can advertise with the African History Network also, okay? And let me post the link here as well. You all can register for the online course that I teach, Ancient Kemet, the Moors and the Mahafa, Understanding the Transatlantic Slave Trade, What They Didn't Teach You in School. And we do these sessions normally live on Thursdays, 8:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. And then all the sessions are archived as well, so you can watch them on demand, also watch them around the world. All right, so the second article that I saw dealing with this, so the first one was from October 22nd, 2019. Second article I saw was from October 24th, from charlestonobserver.com, charlestonobserver.com. What I want to do before we go to that, I want to go to this audio here from the school board meeting that took place, all right? This is the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board of Education meeting. This is before they took the vote. And you're going to hear Malashai Woodbury, Malashai Woodbury, African-American female. She's the chairwoman of the school board, okay? She's the chairwoman of the school board. And she is making the argument, she is talking about some of the prerequisites and some of the, not necessarily apprehension, but she's talking about how they have to do more planning and putting together this mandatory course and what goes into this as well, okay? So let's go to this clip here. And then after this, I'm going to share a segment from Roland Martin Unfiltered, because Roland Martin talked about this on Roland Martin Unfiltered back in October, I think it was. And he also discusses with Dr. Greer Carr, who's the Chair of the Afro-American Studies Department at Howard University. So let's go to this clip here.
I don't have the budget for a men, another mandatory superintendent has said to us, "Listen, I don't have the budget for a men, another mandatory course. I don't know the data that would support it. So as the leader of your district, I need you to allow me the time to figure out the data behind something that's going to impact our children greatly because mandatory means that if a black kid doesn't pass the course, God forbid, they will not graduate. So there is no sense of going back once we make it mandatory without the data. And so as governing agents, again, I would ask that our board listen to what our superintendent is suggesting to us, which is why all nine of us raised our hands to support her to come and lead this school district. And sometimes we will not always agree with her, I get that. But if we don't let her do her job, then the first African-American superintendent, easy come, easy go. So I'm asking our community and this board to give her a chance to move us forward like we have elected and selected her to do with the premise of board, community, I don't have the data to support a mandatory course. In the meantime, let's move forward, let's not wait to do nothing. And I think that's what this is about, so I'll...
Okay, all right, so that was from, that's an excerpt there from the board meeting. So that was Malashai Woodbury, who's the chairwoman on the school board. So in a lot of, so now that source, that is from, let's see, where is that from? That is from, yeah, charlestonobserver.com, okay? That's the article, NC School Board Rejects Required African-American History Class in Controversial Vote. Okay, so I'm going to come to that in just a minute. In most of the headlines, and this is why you have to read behind, beyond the headlines. And most of the headlines that I saw, and I read a number of articles dealing with this, including the article from the griot.com, which I'll come to as well from October 25th, 2019. Most of the headlines didn't talk about the cultural infusion program that the school district does have and the enhancement to the cultural infusion program. One, two, what Malashai Woodbury was saying is that the superintendent, who's an African-American female, who was advocating for the expansion of the cultural infusion program, was also saying they don't have the money in the budget, at least in this whole year, to have, to add a mandatory African-American history course, okay? So from all the information that I'm reading from, dealing with the superintendent, from Malashai Woodbury, who's the chairwoman of the school board, they're not saying they are against a mandatory African-American history course. But it's more to it than just saying, "We want a course, let's have a course." They're saying there's a lot more to this, okay? So I'm going to go through this, because this is, when you actually read these articles, which I did, and I looked at also responses from the school board as well as the community, is more to it than just having a class. There's more involved in this than just having a class. And, you know, she brought up a point that a lot of people haven't thought about. If you make the class mandatory, now are you saying that if somebody fails this class, they can't graduate? Now, reason now, I travel across the country and I do lectures across the country and most African-Americans, unfortunately, I hate to say it, most of us don't understand history. And I'm talking about adults. Most African-Americans don't even understand African-American history. Okay, I'm just, I speak across the country. I've spoken to more cities this year than any in the past few years. And, you know, most African-Americans don't understand history of slavery, don't understand history. Most, most white Americans don't understand history either. So, you know, she brought up a point that I hadn't, had not even thought about. Okay, so if they fail this class, does that mean they can't graduate? Because this is at the high school level, all right? So maybe they have to go to summer school, maybe they have to take Black History, African-American History in summer school, okay, so they can, so they can graduate. All right, so, but that is one, that is one aspect. So when, so here's the thing, it's always much easier for you to say what somebody else should do when you're not the one that actually has to do it. When you actually have to push, put this in the budget, when you actually have to put this class in the place and you, and you actually have to facilitate this and mandate it, okay? So then there ramifications to this. It's always easier to point to somebody else and tell them what they should do. It's much harder to actually do it, all right? So in researching this, I saw, I learned some different nuances of this that I hadn't even thought about. Okay, so let's, let's go to the segment from Roland Martin Unfiltered, right? And Roland's a friend of mine, I used to guest host his national radio show a lot. He was on the Palmer Radio Network and when he went to the period broadcasting system. Dr. Greer Carr is a friend of mine as well. I've interviewed Dr. Greer Carr a few times and I'm going to interview him again soon. He's the Chair of the Afro-American History Department at Afro-American Studies Department at Howard University, okay, in Washington DC. How's everybody doing? We've got Felicia, Samaya, let's see, just a few of the people watching. And I know we have a bunch of other people watching here. Who else we have? Samaya, Ashley, Tiffany, Kelvin, Bruce. Also, if you like this type of information, you can donate to the African History Network, paypal.me/theahnshow, paypal.me/theahnshow, that helps us keep doing the research, staying on the air, pay the bills, keep broadcasting, finance our Sunday night show, et cetera. Okay, so let's go to this clip. This is from Roland Martin Unfiltered. This is, it was uploaded November 2nd. I'm not sure which date this is from. Oh, October 31st, it's from October, October 31st edition of Roland Martin Unfiltered.
All right, folks, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board voted against a proposed mandatory African-American history class. Vote was seven to one against the class, even though during the council meeting, 28 folks spoke in favor of the history class. Fully wants to be council member. Teachers complained that they teach British literature, even though none of the students at the school are British. Seven board members rejected the proposal because they needed more time and more data. I'm sorry, but Greer, of course, you're Chair of the Department of Afro-American Studies at Howard University. You're in North Carolina. I would think in North Carolina, you might want to know more about Black history than British history. Well, I mean, I don't even say people who say, "Listen to the teachers."
Yeah. Well, Roland, I guess, you know, and I do have some direct experience with this, not in North Carolina, but in Philadelphia. You know, I was the leader of the curriculum team that wrote the curriculum framework for the first mandatory African-American history course in the state public schools. Really the first public school in the country, first major school district to make it mandatory. It's from 2005, 2006. And what we had to do, people have to understand, and this doesn't make it right, but this is the logic, and I mean, you're reading that debate. There is something called infusion. The infusion attitude is whatever the subject, you have to infuse content from anybody involved. So for example, if you're teaching a British literature class, understand that that means Jamaican literature. That means Trinity literature. That means the blacks in Great Britain, that means the blacks in English-speaking West Africa, like Ghana or South Africa. And so if you say British literature, you must infuse it with the African presence. That's one strategy. The other strategy would be to have a single class that focuses on the experiences of African people. In this case, in North Carolina, it would be African-American history. What we did in Philadelphia was do both, K-8, because you don't have subjects in K-8. You do math, you do literature. You infuse Black content in all of the areas. And then when you get to high school, you have a mandatory class in African-American history. Finally, here was the thing that we found interesting. Then we said, "Since you teach world history in ninth or 10th grade, it's got to be now world history. Where are the indigenous people of North America and South America? Where are the Chinese? Where are the people who are not European who are in Europe, like the Roma, the so-called Gypsies, that they use the slur word? My point is this, it gets complicated in the politics of curriculum. And in North Carolina, the dodge, and I do believe it is a dodge here, is them trying to say, "We really want to do infusion." Because mostly what infusion means is they drop a few negroes in and forget on the ground.
Okay, so, so that was Dr. Greer Carr, Chair of the Afro-American Studies Department. Now, with this case here, I'm not sure how much he researched it. But I want to look at the expansion of the infusion program as well. I know he's probably talking about in general, but here they expanded the infusion program. So the school board's adoption of the infusion program introduces courses for African-American studies, Latin American studies, American Indian studies, and ethnic literature, okay? According to a school board document. So they are expanding the infusion program that's already there while they continue to evaluate the African-American history course. Now, what's interesting, I want to find out how much will it cost to offer this mandatory African-American history course as well? Because with being mandatory, that means they're not talking about this class being taught at one school. They're talking about this class being taught at all of the, it appears, high schools in the district. And so all the high school students have to go through this class. Do you have to hire more teachers, okay? They may have to hire more teachers to teach this class, what have you. So, you know, when I first saw, the first article that I read about this from the spectrumlocalnews.com, it didn't deal with these other ramifications and other things that have to be figured out and putting together this mandatory course, all right? So let's continue. Okay, so I want to look at the, let's go to the article from charlestonobserver.com, charlestonobserver.com. And let's see here, we've got, okay, "North Carolina School Board Rejects Required African-American History Class in Controversial Vote." And, okay, we have this here. And also, the, let's look at the infusion proposal. They have a link in this article that describes the infusion proposal to include African-American studies. And this is what was adopted. It said, "Acknowledging that we benefit greatly from ethnic studies courses, I am recommending that we continue to support and strengthen an integrated approach. I acknowledge that increased access to multicultural experiences improves the appreciation for different cultures and lessens xenophobic behaviors and attitudes. I can recommend, I can, C-A-N, recommend at this time, one, continue the infusion project with an accountability measure that includes, but is not limited to, adding questions to the quarterly check-ins. Two, continue to seek opportunities for them, for the Freedom School projects, the Freedom School projects." I'll talk about this because the Freedom School projects, that is a six-week class taught during the summer, okay, to schoolchildren that will also deal with African-American history. So I'll talk about that as well. Number three, monitor the process of standards, monitor the process of standards development through DPI to ensure multicultural perspectives are present, K through 12, kindergarten through 12th grade. Number four, establish an African-American Studies Advisory Committee to meet twice per year to review the status of standards, enrollment in elective courses, and ensure continued communication. Number five, offer the following courses in every high school. African-American studies, Latin American studies, American Indian, American Indian studies, and ethnic literature, okay? So that, so that's part of the expansion of their current infusion program, all right? Now, those courses, those four courses would be elective courses, but these would be courses that are offered. Number six, propose that each course is worth one credit hour and has standard and honors courses, has standard and honors course options. Number seven, work with high school guidance counselors to improve communication and marketing for the above courses, all right? Now, it goes on to say at the bottom here, "Please note that the following, that following the completion of the new North Carolina social studies standards and prior to the adoption of appropriate textbooks, I will be better prepared to make recommendations regarding increased required Carnegie units for graduation." So that is coming from the superintendent, Angela P. Hairston, African-American female. She became superintendent of the school district in September 2019. And she is the one proposing, she's the one who proposed the expansion of their infusion program. All right, so, let me see, in reading, because right now with the infusion program, I don't think they included the, I don't, I don't think the current infusion program included the African-American history courses. Have to see what, what, let's see, African-American would be offered, elective, each course would be worth, okay? Have to go back and find out what, what is actually included in the infusion program now. Okay, so if we look at this next article here from the Charleston Observer, all right? Let's see. Okay, so Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board of Education on Tuesday struck down a proposal to offer mandatory, a mandatory class, et cetera. I'm skipping over this stuff that's redundant. Seven to one vote. Seven to one vote came just before district leaders unanimously approved continuing the district's so-called infusion plan, which included the addition of multicultural course offerings for high schoolers, okay? Multicultural course offering, offerings for high schoolers. So the outcome drew mixed reactions on social media. Some comments appeared to support the decision. One person posted, "Great news, finally, some common sense from this crazy school board." One person wrote on the Winston-Salem Journal's Facebook page, okay, that's the newspaper there, Winston-Salem Journal, quote, "I agree, a optional course would be a great idea, but not mandatory," end quote. Another user said the African-American history class, quote, "Would be just another useless course that won't be used once the student graduates from high school," end quote. According to a comment on the WXII Facebook page, okay? So I guess that's the, either radio station or news station there, TV station there. But the school board's rejection also was criticized. Now, Miranda Jones said, quote, "It absolutely felt like a stab in the back," according to WGHP. "The school board's adoption of the infusion plan introduces courses for African-American studies, Latin American studies, and American Indian studies, and ethnic literature," all right? According to a school board document, they would, these courses would all be electives. Now, before she became the sole school board member to vote in favor of the required class, Barbara Burke, who is African-American as well, Barbara Burke, B-U-R-K-E, spoke in favor of both the history course being mandatory and infusion proposal, okay? She said, "They're both great concepts and they both can coexist," she said. Now, during the same discussion period, board chair, Malashai Woodbury, who, you heard me play an excerpt of her statement. Malashai Woodbury asked her fellow leaders to be prudent while there isn't enough data to support the mandatory course, according to footage of the meeting. She said, quote, "In the meantime, let's move forward," end quote. "Let's not wait to do nothing, okay? Let's not wait to do nothing." All right, so that is an article from October 24th, 2019, written by Simone Jasper, for CharlotteObserver.com. All right, now, there was, the griot, the griot.com picked up this story. October 25th, 2019, Winston-Salem School Board Says No to Black History Curriculum. And one of the people they quoted was City Council Member DeeDee Adams, okay? The initials D-D. "Black American Children Need to Know Their History, Not Later But Now," said Winston-Salem City Council Member DeeDee Adams, who said this after a mandatory African-American history course for the district was rejected by the school board. So they talk about Barbara Burke, the sole board member to vote for this. Now, DeeDee Adams recalled how she attended segregated schools. And let me pull this up here. Griot, I think we have the article from Griot here. Let's see if I'll pull this up. All right, but anyway, we'll go ahead. So DeeDee Adams says she recalled how she attended segregated schools from 1960 to 1971 and never once learned about African-American history. She said, "During my 12 years of public education, I don't remember anyone really teaching me about African-American history." Let that sink in for a moment. "I remember North Carolina state history, I remember US history, and I remember world history, but not African-American history." And let's see, let me pull this article up. I thought I had this up, so many of these articles up, so just a second. Let me pull this up here on the... I thought I had this, so many of these articles up, just a second, let me pull this up here on the main computer. How's everybody doing? Anybody share this broadcast on your Facebook page? In African American Business, I almost supposed to name you a business here on the third of the broadcast, will let you know how you can advertise with the African History Network also, okay? All right, so, yeah, this is the article from the Griot.com. "Mandatory African American History Course Rejected By Winston-Salem School Board." Now, in the title, it didn't say they expanded the inclusion program, okay? So, a lot of the headlines and a lot of the commentary I see regarding the story leaves out the inclusion and expand, and expansion of the infusion program. Okay, so DeeDee Jones, who is a city council member, said, "During my 12 years of public education, I don't remember anyone really teaching me about African American history." She said, "I remember US history and I remember world history, but not African American history." Many Af- my African American history was the history my mom and my dad gave me, okay? Now, after the vote, the board unanimously approved an infusion program recommended by Superintendent Angela P. Hairston. Her recommendation includes four courses as electors for all high school students, okay? As I already explained. Now, Miranda Jones is of a group called Local Organizing Committee, all right? Miranda Jones said, "I want to bring a little truth serum to this discussion around an African American Studies class." She said, "This will not be easy, much like being black in Winston-Salem or trying to teach under Eurocentric, under a Eurocentric curriculum is not easy. The truth is, most of my people don't think we'll get this class, just like most of us never thought we'd live to see a black president, just like most of us thought we'd never see a black woman chair, okay, black woman chair of the, of the school board." Now, "Advocates For A Mandatory History Course Nearly Field A Auditorium In The Education Building On Bathania Station Road In Winston-Salem," okay? Now, Joanne Allen is a supporter of the African American History Class. And Joanne Allen said, quote, "Infusion is fine for the lower grade, for the lower grade levels, but we need something mandatory to go along with it." She said, "If our children can learn world civilization and all this US history and all that, what's the difference between that and learning black history? There is no difference," all right? Now, Joanne Allen went on to say that she was not shocked by the vote. She said, quote, "It's clear that we would just actively campaign against them except for Barbara Burke," okay? Because Barbara Burke was, who is the vice chair of the school board. She was the only school board member who voted in favor of the mandatory African American history class. Okay, so that's the article from the Griot, that will give you the link here. And, you know, it's going to be interesting to see what happens with this in the next school year, when they put together their new budget. And then, when they say they're looking for the data, what I want to know is, where are they searching for the data? Okay, now, I wonder if they're using this, I wonder if they're using this one at all, this study at all, from the Southern Poverty Law Center, Teaching Hard History of American Slavery. You can download this on SPLCenter.org, SPLCenter.org. Because this study documents how the history of slavery is being incorrectly taught in schools all across the country and the negative impact that it has on children. And one of the things they did was, they did a study of seventeen hundred students, K through, first grade through twelve, no, sorry, seventeen hundred high school students. They did an online study of seventeen hundred high school students, all right? And they found how little these high school students knew about the history of slavery. They found that only eight percent of high school seniors surveyed could identify slavery as the central reason why the Civil War was fought. Only eight percent of high school students surveyed could identify slavery as the central reason why the Civil War was fought. Because contrary to popular belief, this, now, the Civil War wasn't fought to free the slaves. Civil War was fought to bring the South back into the Union. The South seceded from the Union because they thought Abraham Lincoln was going to free enslaved Africans. Okay, so the Civil, so contrary to popular belief, the Union did not fight the Civil War to free the slaves. No, because, see, when you, when you read, when you study the Emancipation Proclamation of January 1, 1863, you got to look at the preliminary Emancipation Proclamation of September 22, 1863. Because the Emancipation Proclamation was a military strategy to bring the South back into the Union. You can go to, you can go to LOC.gov, the Library of Congress website, and, or you go to history.com, history.com official website of the History Channel, and search for Emancipation Proclamation. Because the initial Emancipation Proclamation, September 22, 1863, stated that this, the slaves would be, enslaved Africans would be freed in the states that were in rebellion or the territories that were in rebellion if they did not come back into the Union by January 1, 1863. See, we have a total misunderstanding of the Emancipation Proclamation. It was a military strategy to bring those territories in rebellion. Those Southerns, those states that seceded from the Union, starting with South Carolina, December 20, 1860, and these states that took up arms to fight against the Union. They were trying to strip them of their enslaved Africans, all right? Who they were using to dig ditches, dig ditches and wash clothes and things like this. And the enslaved Africans were essential to maintain the wealth of the South, all right? So, but when you read it, it was also saying that states that, territories that remain loyal to the Union, they could keep their slaves. So territories like Maryland and Delaware and Kentucky, okay? They were allowed to keep their slaves because they stayed loyal to the Union. So January 1, 1863 comes, because when you actually read the Emancipation Proclamation, it gives you all these exceptions to where freeing enslaved Africans does not apply. They give you all these exceptions. So, people really need to read it, because when you read it, you get a totally different understanding of what we think it is. See, because in school, we were taught the Emancipation Proclamation, free the slaves, no it didn't. Not only that, when the Confederate States of America is set up, these eleven states secede from the Union, they break away, they set up their own government. So, the US, the Union doesn't have any control over them, because they seceded from the Union. So you can't make laws that govern them. So you don't have the authority by proclamation to free their slaves. Now, what happened was, when the Union troops would go into these territories and take control of these territories, they were freeing enslaved Africans, sometimes set the plantations on fire, things like this. So you would have, you know, former slaves roaming, you would have former slaves that were homeless. Some of those, some of those former slaves are going to join the Union Army, the males would join the Union Army, all right? So, and it would bring these territories, they would gain control of these territories, right? And bring them back into the Union. But you didn't have an authority by proclamation to declare that the enslaved Africans in those territories were free. So when you actually read the Emancipation Proclamation, you get a entirely different understanding of it. Two-thirds, now, when this study that was done of high school seniors, two-thirds, or sixty-eight percent of high school seniors surveyed, did not know that it took a constitutional amendment to formally end slavery. That's the Thirteenth Amendment. They didn't know that, okay? Because most of them thought it was the Emancipation Proclamation. One, fewer than one in four students, or twenty-two percent, could correctly identify how provisions in the US Constitution gave advantages to slaveholders, okay? Like the three-fifths compromise of 1787, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the US Constitution, which people mistakenly think, say, we were three-fifths of a human being, it's not, it's not what they're talking about. Or understanding how the Electoral College works, because the Electoral College was created by the US Constitution in 1787, all right? And then, so, they also give a lot of recommendations on how to correctly teach the history of slavery as well, okay? So you can download this from SPLCenter.org, Southern Poverty Law Center. And I use this also, excerpts, excerpts of this, to teach my online course that I teach also, Ancient Kemit, the Moors and the Ma'afa, Understanding the Transatlantic Slave Trade, What They Didn't Teach You At School, okay? So this is, normally it's a nine to ten week online course, but this, this edition here is an expanded edition. Because, you know, we were dealing with the four-hundredth year anniversary of August 20, 1619, we have so much to cover. So this, this go around is thirteen weeks. I'll post a link here, you can register for it, it's normally a hundred and thirty dollars. It's on sale eighty dollars. All the, we do the sessions live, normally Thursday night, 8:00 PM is the standard time, but all the sessions are recorded. So you go watch it over and over again, give you numerous articles, numerous books that we reference as well. So you get a lot of information, I do a PowerPoint presentation also. And our special bundle pack that we have, for a very limited time only, is you will also get my six digital download bundle pack, the Black Migration 1619 to 2019 bundle pack, which is a sixty-dollar value, you get that, you'll get that free as well, okay? So it's six of my latest presentations in digital download format. The online course is regularly a hundred and thirty dollars, the digital downloads are regularly sixty. So that's a hundred and ninety dollars, so you get it all on sale for eighty dollars, okay? So we just posted a link here, you can register there, and I'll email you the digital downloads for the, for my lectures, all right? Okay, so you can register for that. Karen said, "Our children can learn their history." Yeah, absolutely, our children can learn their history, we have to teach it to them. Now, if you look at the cover here, who's this gentleman right here? Anybody know who this guy is here? If you saw the video I did dealing with one studio exec, executive back in 1994, suggested that Julia Roberts portrayed Harriet Tubman. And he was immediately shut down, by the way, okay? Watch that video that I did, because I go deep into this. But who's this guy right here? Anybody know who this gentleman is here? Okay, now, we see, we see Harriet Tubman here, okay? And this looks like probably William Lloyd Garrison, okay? But this guy right here, anybody know who this is? Can you all see this? All right, so, this is William Steele. William Steele, William Steele was a free African American man living in Philadelphia, who was helping to finance the Underground Railroad, and he's the one that recorded the majority of the history of the Underground Railroad. He published the book that he wrote, The Underground Railroad, the 1872. Most of the history that we, most of the history that we know about the Underground Railroad is because of him, okay? No, it's not Dr. Carter G. Woodson, okay? No, no, this is Dr. Carter G. Woodson right here. This is William Steele, S-T-I-L-L. This is Dr. Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of black history and the co-founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History in 1915, September 9, 1915. And he created Negro History Week in 1926, okay? He wrote a number of books, his most popular book would be The Miseducation of the Negro, which came out in 1933. That's Dr. Carter G. Woodson, all right? Okay, all right, so let's continue here. And she said, "Let's see, our children can learn their history," yeah, that's true, okay? And somebody has to teach it to them, to be able to teach the history, you have to know the history. All right, let's continue. Okay, so, the other article here is, and let me see, let me look at something here. I'll post a link here to this study to download, because they go through and they give a lot of good suggestions. And they lay out seven key problems with the current way that the history of slavery is taught in school. We teach about slavery without, without context, referring to present the good news before the bad news. We tend to subscribe to a progressive view of American history that can acknowledge flaws only to the extent that they have been addressed and solved. And, let's see here, let me pull this up, I think I have this in PowerPoint presentation, so we'll pull this up also. Because, the information on page sixteen of this study is really good. Page ten and page sixteen are, yes, page ten, okay? So I'll pull this up, let me go to this last article. "Supporters Of Mandatory African American History Course Talk: Next Steps, School Board Members Explain Their Votes." Okay, school board members explain their votes. Because I wanted to look at what the school board members were saying also. I want to look at different sides of this argument, okay, to get a better understanding of this. And the type of work that I do, I'm going into my tenth year of doing radio, being a radio talk show host. I do radio here in Detroit, nine, ten AM, the superstation WFDF. Even though I'm not a journalist, I have known journalists, and I approach this from a journalistic perspective. So you have to hear both sides of the argument. You can't just, you can't just go with the side of the argument that you agree with. You also have to investigate different sides of the argument and report the sides of the arguments that you disagree with as well. All right. "So Advocates For A Mandatory African American History Course Say They Are Already Working On Their Next Steps Despite Tuesday's No Vote By The Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board Of Education." So they, they quote Miranda Jones here, and let's pull this up here. Okay, so Miranda Jones, speaking on behalf of Hate Out of Winston. So there's a, there's an organization called Hate Out of Winston. She spoke on behalf of Hate Out of Winston group members, and she said they were going to meet to discuss how to further efforts, including whether or not to take their push to the North Carolina General Assembly. Okay, she said, quote, "I'm going to be advocating for some community courses because the reality is, we don't need the school system in order to teach black children their history. The reality is, we don't need the school system to teach black children their history. I'm going to be talking about how we can do this in recreation centers, churches, temples, mosques, wherever we can." Now, they should, I think they should do that, period, regardless of what's in the school. Yes, the, yes, the, the school should have mandatory courses, because they have that in Philadelphia. The, the city of Philadelphia was the first one that I read about, and I read about this a few years ago, to have a mandatory African American history course, okay? That's the city of Philadelphia, and that's in high schools. But a lot of these different recreation centers, churches, temples, mosques, they, they would be open to having people come in and teach the children African American history classes. So a most, so a motion to pass a mandatory African American history course failed in a seven-to-one vote by the school board. Barbara Burke, the board's vice chairwoman, was the sole supporter of the course. All right, now, among, so immediately after that vote, the board unanimously approved an infusion program, which includes African American studies proposed by Superintendent Angela P. Hairston. And this was an expansion of their current infusion program. So they adopted the expansion of their current infusion program. So when we look at Superintendent Angela P. Hairston's recommendation, so this article here from, this is from JournalNow.com, JournalNow.com. This is basically the most extensive article I saw on this subject that really went deep into this topic and talked about the different perspectives on this mandatory course. So when we look at Superintendent Hairston's recommendations. Among her recommendations, Superintendent Hairston calls for continuing the cultural infusion project with an accountability measure. "The cultural infusion project was started in the mid-1990s, aimed at helping African American students see themselves within the kindergarten-through-12th-grade curriculum." Superintendent Hairston also recommends looking for opportunities from the Freedom School Program. The Freedom School Program is a six-week summer literacy and cultural enrichment program, focused on, focused on serving children in the community where some cultural programs may be limited. Okay, so this is the Freedom School. Now, she recommends monitoring the process of standards development through the department- through the Department of Public Instruction to ensure multicultural perspectives are present from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Now, through Superintendent Hairston's plan, an African American Studies Advisory Committee would be established. It would, it would meet twice a year to review the status of standards, enrollment in elective courses, and ensure continued communication. African American Studies, Latin American Studies, American Indian Studies, and ethnic literature courses would be offered as electives in every high school. Each course would be worth one full credit hour and have standard and honors course options. Students in the school district are currently taking the African American Studies and Latin American Studies courses in six or seven schools, okay? So this is important, so right now, before the adoption of the expansion of this cultural infusion project, students in the school district are currently taking the African American Studies and Latin American Studies courses in six or seven schools. And the ethnic literature course is offered in just one school. With this expansion, these courses would be offered in all of the high schools. Now, I'm not, I'm not sure how many high schools are in this school district, okay? But these courses would be offered in all the high schools and they are electives. So what are the next steps? Miranda Jones of Hate Out of Winston said that other local activists have reached out to her about having discussions on ways to actively campaign against members of the school board who told us one thing and did another. She said, quote, "Just kind of organizing around getting people on the board who are going to do what we feel is right for the children," end quote, she said. Now, she went on to say that African American history community classes would be for children in middle and high school, okay, in middle and high school and would primarily be centered in the heart of black communities. But she wants to make sure that all children can access the information. Now, when you study Dr. Carter G. Woodson, one of the things that Dr. Carter G. Woodson said was that, because he was an educator as well, okay? He taught at Howard University at one point, he taught at Frederick Douglass High School, also there in the D C area. He, Dr. Carter G. Woodson felt that the history of African Americans had to be taught in every school across this country. Not just to African American students, not just to schools that have a predominantly African American population. Because he felt that the bigotry, discrimination that we suffer from largely comes from people not understanding the contributions that African Americans have made to this country. So then they are fed lies and fed stereotypes by African Americans as opposed to getting the truth. And them not having the truth about our history allows these stereotypes, allows these lies to persist and people internalize them and operate based upon them, okay? So all, so all this that we see taking place right now in this country is based upon, is the result of history and largely also people not understanding history as well. Alright, the debates over Confederate monuments, all this stuff. And what happens is, is when people are fed lies specifically about African Americans, this influences how they vote. This influences who they vote for, this influences policies that they advocate for, policies that they support. This, this has a wide ranging impact, this, this impacts the quality of healthcare that we get. This impacts African American women having larger, having larger infant mortality in hospitals because their concerns, et cetera, are being ignored by doctors because doctors look down upon them, think they know less, et cetera. You're all different types of things like this, this, you know, racism is a system of advantage and privilege distributed based upon race. And racism comes out of the ideology of white supremacy. Racism occurs when one race of people control the majority of the wealth, power, resources, benefits, privileges, land, access to education, access to opportunity, and they use that to marginalize, subordinate, do harm to another race of people. Alright, when they control the majority of the media, et cetera, of access to healthcare, all of this. Okay, and they use that to marginalize, subordinate, do harm to another race of people. Well, when we, when we look at what a system is, a lot of people just think of a system as something being, something abstract, something out there, right? The system is like the cloud, right, the cloud where you upload information. But no, a sys, a system is actually people who have been indoctrinated with a certain ideology. And they work to uphold and enforce that ideology and protect it. This is actually what a system is, people who have been indoctrinated to think a certain way. And they work to uphold and enforce and protect the way they've been taught to think. This is really a system, the system is actually the people. And the system deals with how the people have been taught, how they have been indoctrinated. Alright. So looking at next steps. Miranda Jones said, "It is our goal to invite those who want to learn about black people and their contributions to come and learn," okay? In, in, in these various classes, in the recreation centers, the churches, the mosques, et cetera. Now, the Winston Salem Local Organizing Committee, the Winston Salem Local Organizing Committee plans to go into the community to make people aware of the board's decision and start providing information to children and their parents that won't be available in the school system, okay? Said the Frank Juan Mohammed, the group's facilitator. He said, quote, "We will be conducting seminars and presentations concerning black history in the community with those existing structures within our community that will be willing to partner with us to get this important history to both our children and the parents," end quote, Mohammed said. Now, he said that the vote by the school board, quote, "Demonstrates to us the reason," and let me scroll down here. "Demonstrates to us the reason why it's so important for the black community to look to establish independent institutions to educate our children." "Because the way the current public school system is structured, it's not sufficient to address the needs of our children," end quote. He said that the Local Organizing Committee plans to continue to fight, quote, "Our tax dollars are there and many of the individuals on the board are elected officials." Okay, Mohammed said of the school system, quote, "When I say fight, we will fight with our vote as well," end quote. Now, after hearing Superintendent Hairston's proposal, the Winston, the Winston Salem chapter of the N double A C P got behind the superintendent's recommendation, said Reverend Alvin Carlisle, the group's president. Quote, "This will be the first time that it will be, this quote, 'This will be the first time it will be in every high school and the first time it's for a full credit hour.'" Okay, Reverend Carlisle said of all the ethnic credit courses in Hairston, in Superintendent Hairston's proposal. He said, "The local N double A C P members believe that Superintendent Hairston's recommendations are sound and a good step forward." He went on to say, quote, "They will give her a measuring stick, a measuring stick, a chance to see how well students participated and their thoughts coming, and their thoughts coming out of a full credit course on black history and that kind of thing," end quote. Now, this article also laid out some of the board members comments, because I read that as well, okay? Because I'm reading different sides of the, of the argument. So when we look at the board members' comments. Now, Malalashay Woodbury, who you heard the segment that I played, the clip I played of her in the beginning. She is the chairwoman of the school board, she's African American, African American female. And she says she voted for Superintendent Hairston's recommendations for extending the, for extending the infusion program, saying that Superintendent Hairston revised the former infusion program to include a number of other elements. She said that Superintendent Hairston, who started her job as superintendent in early September two thousand nineteen, has been willing to make a decision on an issue that has predated her administration as well as the majority of the members on the current board. Woodbury said, quote, "We are all trying to grow, learn, and do what's right for all children. I understand that the community is a little frustrated and disappointed because they've been working towards something for an, for an extensive amount of time, but patience is key when it's bureaucracy," end quote. Now, the question that, that I have is that in reading all the comments from the community members who wanted a mandatory course, I didn't see anything stating that they would encourage all African American students in high school to take the African American history course that will be offered as an elective. Let me repeat that. In all the comments that I saw from those advocating for a mandatory African American history course, and they said they're going to continue to fight and they're going to set up, have classes at recreation centers and churches and things like that, which is good. But I didn't see any, from what I read, I didn't see any saying that they were going to encourage all of the African American high school students to take that course, the African American history course that is being offered. So my thing is, that's something that should be advocated as well. Now, maybe they are advocating this and it wasn't reported. Okay, I looked at a number of different comments and I, I didn't see that. But being that an African American history class is being offered as an elective, not mandatory, if you want a mandatory class, you should, you, 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 my, my line of thinking would be you can encourage as many African American students to take the, take the elective course so that everybody could see the impact that it has on the students. And then you can look at the impact it has on the students, you can look at, at how they perform in the class, how they are attentive in the class, how they're excited to learn the information in the class. And then that gives you more support and ammunition to get the mandatory course. So I just find it interesting that in all the comments that I see, they're not talking about getting as many African American students into the, into the African American history course that isn't elective. Alright, let's look at some of your comments here, I'm going to continue with some of the the board member comments, we're going to continue with that. Shaya Nika Warren, how you doing? Thanks for the donation also, Shaya Nika. Also, you can donate to the African History Network, paypal.me forward slash the A H N show, paypal.me forward slash the A H N show. Or at our website, africanhistorynetwork.com, if you like this type of information that helps us keep doing the research, stay on the air, cover expenses, helps to offset expenses when I have to travel out of town, helps us finance our Sunday night show, okay, helps pay the bills, paypal.me forward slash the A H N show. Or at our website, africanhistorynetwork.com, click on the yellow donate button. Also, we have our, my six DVD bundle pack and six digital download bundle pack, Black Migration sixteen nineteen to twenty nineteen. These are six of my latest presentations, all presentations I did in twenty nineteen. This is, we have it, the six DVD bundle pack is fifty dollars, digital downloads are forty dollars, and includes Black Migration sixteen nineteen to twenty nineteen. Includes, let's see, Black Migration, so Black Migration is this year's theme for African American History Month. What a lot of people don't know is that there's an annual theme for Black History Month every month, okay, every year. Okay, which was renamed African American, African American History Month, not by Donald Trump, but, but, but by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, which is the governing body of Black History Month or African American History Month, which was co-founded by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, September ninth nineteen fifteen in Chicago. Alright, there's an annual theme each year to give structure, to give purpose to the monthly cultural celebration. This year's theme is Black Migrations, which dealt with the migrations of African people, voluntary migrations and forced migration, so not just the transatlantic slave trade, but also the Great Migration of nineteen fifteen to nineteen seventy, where you had approximately six million African Americans migrated from the south, north, and out west, and this totally changes the country. And then also I dealt with the Red Summer of nineteen nineteen, because this is the one hundredth year anniversary of the Red Summer. So it's not just the four hundredth year anniversary of August twenty sixteen nineteen in Virginia, alright, and in sixteen nineteen, codified slave laws don't even exist in any of the thirteen colonies. The first colony to have codified slave laws was Massachusetts in sixteen forty-one. And then also I deal with the fact that in fifteen twenty-six, you had the Spanish taking Africans into the territory we today call South Carolina, that's ninety-three years before Jamestown, Virginia. So we don't understand any of this history. So I do with the Great Migration and Detroit Race Ride in nineteen forty-three. During World War Two, it's a huge race ride up and down Woodward Avenue. Juneteenth, history, Emancipation Day, but not Independence Day, we never got our forty acres and a mule. So I deal with Special Field Order Number Fifteen, also known as Forty Acres and a Mule. Dr. King's Poor People's Campaign, we're coming to get our check, and also deal with how Malcolm X was calling for a unification of the civil rights leaders, even while he was still in the Nation of Islam. Ancient Africans in America before Native Americans, Columbus or slavery from Kemet to Wakanda. So we deal with not just the omens, but we also deal with the African presence in this country going back at least fifty one thousand seven hundred years ago ago to Coysin, and deal with some recent archaeological discoveries. This presentation here deals with the little known history of why African Americans switched from the Republican Party to the Democratic Party. Republican Party to the Democratic Party has to do with the Southern Strategy, known as the Lily White Movement in nineteen twenty-eight, which is a movement by the Republican Party to push African Americans out of the Republican Party by ignoring our issues, ignoring our concerns about the rise of the Ku Klux Klan, things like this. And they used the Southern Strategy to target five former Confederate states to get the Southern Dixicrats, Southern segregationist Dixicrats to vote for their candidate for president in nineteen twenty-eight, who was Herbert Hoover. And the Southern Strategy worked. And so this starts to shift. And over time, we want to go to the Democratic Party because in general, we, we saw them as being more receptive to our issues and concerns. And this is going to call, cause a party realignment between who's in the Democratic Party and who's in the Republican Party. You're going to see largely a shift, a party realignment between both parties, not just one party. Then also, we have this presentation, When Black Men Dominated Horse Racing, When Black Men Dominated Horse Racing and How An Organized Effort Forced Them Out. So a lot of people don't know that African American men used to dominate horse racing and a lot of the early Kentucky Derbies, we won. Okay, this, this, so this is Oliver Lewis, here in the middle, Oliver Lewis won the first Kentucky Derby that was ran in eighteen seventy-five, he was nineteen years old. Alright, this is Jimmy Wink, Winkfield. He won the Kentucky Derby nineteen oh two. Alright, so you have a lot of these brothers. This is Isaac Murphy, okay, he was a Kentucky Derby winner also. So we used to dominate horse racing, but we were, there was an organized effort by white men to push us out of horse racing. Then you get Six Principles of Political Self-Defense, understanding how laws and policies impact the economic conditions of African Americans. There are actually two presentations on here, because I did one July twenty-first, two thousand nineteen at the Black Homeschool Conference in Atlanta. Then I did another one September two thousand nineteen as well, okay, so that's in the six bundle pack, nineteen fifteen. Okay, now, what were you asking about nineteen fifteen? Let me ask that question, what about nineteen fifteen, let me know. Alright. So let's continue here, let's go to this, I'm going to go, continue with this last article here. And I'll post a link here for the Black Migration sixteen nineteen to twenty nineteen bundle pack. Then also you can register for the online courses that I teach as well, Ancient Kemet, the Moors, and the Ma'afa, Understanding the Transatlantic Slave Trade, what they didn't teach them in school, okay? Because that's, this go around is going to be thirteen weeks. And I mean, we deal with, we do with thousands of years of history also. And that's regularly a hundred and thirty dollars, it's also eighty dollars and all this. We do the sessions live normally Thursday nights, but all, but all the sessions are recorded, so you go back and watch them over and over again as well. Okay, and I'm looking at putting, putting the whole course on DVD, because I've had some people ask me if I could put the course on DVD also, so that's more extensive, but I may do that as well. Alright, so board member comments, let's go back to this article here from JournalNow.com, board member comments. Alright. So I was looking at the comments from Malalashay Woodbury. Not, not exactly sure how to pronounce her name. But she said that, and she's the chairwoman of the board, of the school board. She said her vote and probably the vote of the majority of board members supporting the superintendent, oh, let me back up here, I missed something, okay? She said, we are all trying to grow, learn, and do what's right for all our children. I understand that the community is a little frustrated and disappointed because they've been working towards something for an extensive amount of time, but patience is a key with bureaucracy. Now, she said that she has been teaching African American history at North Carolina A and T State University since she was about twenty-three years old. Right, she says she has been teaching African American history at North Carolina A and T since she was twenty-three years old. She said, quote, "My bias is African American history. I want it to be taught all day." But at, but as a governing agency for fifty-five thousand children and over seven thousand employees and a superintendent that's leading it, I have to think then, I have to think then more strategic about the success of all children and how can we get it done? All right, now, they have fifty-five thousand children in the school district. I'm not sure how many high schools they have and how many children, but they're going to have to have more than one teacher who teaches it. So it sounds like they would have to hire, in having this mandatory class, it sounds like they would have to hire teachers to teach the class. And then also order textbooks as well, which means they have to choose textbooks, order textbooks also. So that deals with budget allocation. And one of the things she was, one of the things Malasai Woodbury was saying in the, in the beginning, in the clip that I played for you, is that the superintendent was saying that they don't have it in the budget, at least for this school year, is not allocated in the budget to be able to teach this mandatory course. All right, so hopefully it'll be in the next school year's budget. But I want to, I want to know, how many high schools do they have? How many teachers do they have to have? How many students will go through this class in the, in the school year? Is it just for, do they have to take it in twelfth grade? Is it mandatory? It's like, do they have to, do they have to take the class in twelfth grade? So only twelfth graders have to take the class? Or does everybody in a school year have to take it? I'm not sure how that works, okay? It may be just, it may be, for instance, only twelfth graders have to take the class, or you take the class in ninth grade and it's mandatory that you pass this class at ninth grade to be able to go to tenth grade? So I, in all the research I've done on this, I haven't seen how that would actually work. All right, so Malasai Woodbury went on this, Malasai Woodbury said that her vote and probably the votes of the majority of board members supporting the superintendent's recommendation was because, quote, she, referring to the superintendent, clearly did not have the data to support mandatory anything, end quote. So she, referring to Superintendent Hairston, said, instead of just standing still, these are the things I can support with a budget and with the resources I have, end quote. All right, so once again, when people say it has to be taught in school, things like this, and mandatory, right, they never talk about the budget side of this. This has to be paid for. So how do you pay for it? How much is it going to cost? Which textbooks are you going to use? How much does, how much do the textbooks cost? How many teachers do you need to teach the class? Do you have to hire more teachers? Do you have money in the budget to hire more teachers? What are the requirements of the teachers to be able to teach this class? Do they have to have degrees in history? They have to have degrees in African American history, Afro-American history, things like this. So these are legitimate questions. All right, and then I would hate to be the kid that flunks black history. If I'm black and I flaunt black history, I mean, huh? I mean, would it be black history to be the first kid to flaunt black history in, in that school district? That would be a little-known black history fact. All right. So when asked if she had concerns about advocates of a mandatory African American history course voting against her if she decides to run for the school board for another term, Malasai Woodbury said, as a citizen, she respects the democratic process, all right? Quote, "A vote for or against me is, is a good for the whole. I appreciate everybody coming out to vote based on what they think is the best choice for the good of the whole." Okay, now, the people who vote against her, or people who want to vote against her, I would ask those people, are you advocating for African American students who are in the high schools to take the elective African American history class? Because you're not advocating for the students to take, are you, are you telling the students to take the elective African American history class? Because if you're not telling them to take that class, why not? If you want, if you want them to learn African American history, well, guess what? There's a class that they're going to offer to teach it. So are you going to advocate for them to, to do that? Because see, oftentimes, I'm not saying it applies here, maybe it does to some people. Oftentimes, people advocate for what they don't have, but don't, but ignore the resources that they do have. Oftentimes, people oftentimes, people keep trying to fight for something that they're told no on, but don't take advantage of what they're told yes on. I don't know if it applies here, but it may for some people. All right, let's see here. All right, now Barbara Burke, who was the lone school board member who voted for the mandatory class, said that, okay, she said it is her hope that, quote, "Over time, the community can come to consensus with the board to help us move forward." That was Malasai Woodbury. Barbara Burke, Burke says she voted for the mandatory course, African American history course, because the school board has heard so much support for such a course from the community, including a signed petition, comments from city and county government officials, and letters read to the school board from North Carolina State House Representatives. Now, the question I would ask all these people who say you want the mandatory course, how much is the course going to cost? How many teachers need to be hired? I would, because a lot of times, once again, yes, the course should be mandatory, but you see, my degree is in business administration also. I understand somebody has to pay for this. This is going to cost money. So yes, I think the course should be mandatory, but the other side is, how much is it going to cost? How do we pay for it? How much of the textbook is going to cost? Where do we get the textbooks from? Somebody has to choose the textbook. Right? So a lot of times, these are quite, these are all, it, it, once again, going back to the beginning, is, is real easy to tell somebody else to do it. But when you don't want to actually has to do it, it's much more difficult and complicated. All right. Okay, so what I leave, all right, so this was, so Barbara Burke said, this was important for the community. It just breaks my heart to think that they have been asking for this course, asking for the school board to consider it, going on four years now. F O U R, four, four years now. For their begging, really, to just land and fall on deaf ears, I think that is wrong, that is so wrong, end quote. So Barbara Burke added that members of the school board need to understand that they are elected by the people. Barbara Burke said, "I spent thirty years in this district as an educator. And as an educator, I understand the importance of having a mandatory history course. I understand why it is important for all of our kids, not just for some of them, but for all of them to know the history of this country." Now, that's true. I agree with that. Okay, I totally agree with that, but also understand all this stuff got to be paid for too. So if your budget doesn't allow for it this year, then you have to allocate for it in the next year's budget. Okay? So Barbara Burke says she also supports Superintendent Hairston's recommendations and believes that both the infusion program recommendations and the mandatory African American history course can coexist. Okay, let's see here. Okay, so we got Michael. Okay, who's making this course? Yeah, so they, so I know there was going to be an advisory board, but the advisory board is dealing with the inclusion. So the other thing is who, who puts together this course? Right? That's, that's another question. Okay, you have to, you have to get a textbook. You have to choose a textbook. You have to pay for the textbook. You have to select the teachers, determine the criteria for the teachers to be able to teach the class. And you have to put together a curriculum. Okay, so does the school board put together the curriculum? Do the history teachers that are already there in the school put together the curriculum? All that has to be figured out. Now, what they may do is for the inclusion class, and I haven't, I, I don't have it, I don't have the details on the African American history class that's an elective. Okay, they may just, I don't have the details on that, but they may just, whatever that is, they may just take that same place, class and just make it mandatory. So I, I don't know the details of that class. Okay, Pacian, African American history is American history. The fact is, the people are debating whether it should be taught to, is a clear indication of why it should be mandatory. Well, they're not debate, they're not debating on whether it should be taught. Most people agree it should be taught. There are other, there are other ramifications into actually making it mandatory. Okay, Michael Long said, because, because this can be more history and not true history. All right, let's see. Carlos said, "Demand increased application for the class will expand classes." Yeah, so you see, my thing is, they, they should encourage all African American students to take the African American history class that's an elective. Okay, if you want to get, if you want to get the elective turned into a mandatory course, you need to pack that course and show the demand for it, show the, show the impact that it has on the students. But I haven't seen people talking about that, so. All right. Okay, so she said, "Right now, I do believe we need, right now, I do believe we need this course." This is Barbara Burke. She said, referring to the proposed mandatory course, "I'm going to be hopeful that going forward, this will be revisited and that this community will have the opportunity for this course to exist as a mandatory course in our district," end quote. Let's see. So Elizabeth Mott Singer is a white school board member. And Elizabeth Mott Singer, Elizabeth Mott Singer, let's see, a, a, a member of the school board says she voted for the superintendent's proposal because Superintendent Hairston was hired for her expertise. She said that when she considers hiring a superintendent, she tries to determine if somebody can be trusted to move to the district in the direction it needs to go. She said she has looked over the years into a mandatory course. Mott Singer said, quote, "The concerns I had were that I think the core curriculum has to be inclusive of groups, of groups that have traditionally felt ignored, including African American, Latin American, Native American. I think our core curriculum has to be robust and diverse and accurate. I think that the focus really has to be the core curriculum, K through eight, and what happens in our high school social studies courses," end quote. Now, she said, "Based on her talks with high school principals and students, she found that it was difficult to mandate a course because there are a few slots for elective courses, such as art, music, and foreign language." She said, quote, "If you take away one of those slots for kids, you're taking away one of their few elective slots. For many of our children, it's those electives that actually keep them in school and engaged." All right, so I don't know how many elective courses they have. You know, okay. I don't know how many elective courses they have, but if you make it mandatory, are you taking away an elective slot? That could be possible as well. That is something that, that, that's something, I guess, that has to be considered as well. You know, when, when you're not the one that has to make these decisions and actually like put this stuff together, there are nuances and ramifications and factors you have to deal with that, that people on the outside don't know exists, who are just telling you to just get it done, you know? So that's another aspect, because reading the first article, which was pretty scant, that's another aspect that I never even thought about. Okay, if you make this class mandatory, does it reduce how many elective courses a student can take? Maybe it does. I don't know. All right, so let me post a link to this article here as well. This is from JournalNow.com. This was like most, the most extensive article I saw dealing with this. But this is a really interesting, this is a really interesting issue here, okay? And I want to see how other school districts that have a mandatory African American history course, I want to see how they dealt with these issues also. How much did it cost? Is it mandatory in high school? How do you do it? Which grade is it mandatory that they take it? Is it twelfth grade? Or by twelfth grade, you have to take this class? I want to find out how they did it. Carlos said, "That class planted a seed and made me want to learn more." Yeah, I totally agree with that. He said, "I took this class in high school, Bessemer, Alabama, nineteen ninety-four. The first year it was offered. Did the man outpace the class occupancy?" Yeah, I can definitely believe that. All right, let's see. Who else we have here? How's everybody doing? Okay, we got Carlos, we have Pacian, Michael, just Nicole. Are the DVDs, digital downloads available anytime, available on your Facebook site or website, I'm thinking. What should I say here? Hold on. We have them discounted right now. You can also inbox me or email me, customerservice@AfricanHistoryNetwork.com. I'm thinking of getting Okay, I can't see the rest of that. So Nicole, email me, customerservice@AfricanHistoryNetwork.com. Customerservice@AfricanHistoryNetwork.com. And we have them, you know, we have them discounted right now. We had the digital downloads, Black Migrations sixteen nineteen to twenty nineteen. Six DVD and six digital download bundle pack. It's also available at our website, AfricanHistoryNetwork.com, okay? All right, so be sure to listen to the African History Network Show, Sundays, nine PM, eleven PM Eastern Standard Time, on nine, ten AM, Superstation WFDF. And let me see here, do I have this slide in here for, I think it's in here, dealing with, yeah. Because I was going to go over very quickly here the problems with the way the history of slavery is taught in schools now. Be sure to download the, be sure to download the study from probably Law Center, Teaching Hard History, American Slavery, Teaching Hard History, American Slavery. I took this to the printer and got it printed up. Okay, it's a fifty-six page study that deals with how the, maybe it's less than fifty-six pages, about fifty-two pages. This is how the history of slavery is mistalked in schools all across the country. So they identify seven key problems with the current way slavery is taught. One, we teach about slavery without context, referring to present the good news before the bad news. So they teach about like Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, but take it totally out of context. They teach about the Underground Railroad and a lot of what we learned about Harriet Tubman in school and Underground Railroad is false. Two, we, so watch the, watch the November third, two thousand nineteen edition of the African History Network. watch the November 3rd, 2019 edition of the African History Network Show where we dealt with the film Harriet and had historian, fellow historian Jaman Jordan on, and we separated fact from fiction and dealt with a lot of true history of Harriet Tubman. I give you a lot of sources also, a lot of articles to read. Number two, we tended to subscribe to a progressive view of American history that can acknowledge flaws only to the extent that they have been addressed and solved, okay? Number three, we teach about the American enslavement of Africans as an exclusively Southern institution, where at one time, all the, when we look at the colonies, all 13 colonies at one time had slaves. All right, now, by the time the Constitution is signed in 1787, five states had abolished slavery. First state to abolish, abolish slavery was Vermont in 1777. Vermont, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, they're all going to abolish slavery by, you know, 1787. Four, we rarely connect slavery to the ideology that grew up to sustain and protect white supremacy. So the connection is not made between white supremacy and slavery. And I would say white supremacy and a system of racism. The connection is not between, made between that and slavery. We just taught that slavery is a system that, that happened and it ended in 1865. But you're not dealing with, why did slavery take place? You're not dealing with the ideology that allowed it to take place, okay? And you're dealing with a mal-distribution of wealth, power, and resources because of 246 years of chattel slavery. What were the side effects? What's the legacy of slave? Number five, we often rely on pedagogy poorly suited to the topic, okay? When asked, when we ask teachers to tell us about their favorite lesson when teaching about slavery, dozens proudly reported classroom simulations. Classroom simulations or reenactments, reenactments of slavery and things like this, the reenactment of traumatic experiences are not shown to be effective as a learning strategy and can harm vulnerable children. So a lot of these teachers are teaching the history of slavery with no guidance. They don't have policies in the schools. They don't have policies in the school districts. Number six, we rarely connect slavery to the ideology that grew up to sustain and protect white supremacy, because I had that in there twice. We teach about the American enslavement of, have really connected to the ideology, because that's number four. What was number six? Number six, we rarely make connections to the present. Number six should be, we rarely make connections to the present. How can students develop a meaningful understanding of the rest of American history if they do not understand the scope and lasting, in lasting impact of enslavement? Okay, Reconstruction, the Great Migration, the Harlem Renaissance, and the Civil Rights Movement do not make sense when so divorced from the arc of American history. So when we deal with the history of slavery and we deal with the history after slavery, Reconstruction, 1865, 1877, post-Reconstruction, you have to deal with this history chronologically. And this is one of the things we do in the online course that I teach, ancient chemist, the Moors and the Mahafa, understanding the transatlantic slave trade with a then teacher in school. You have to do all this history chronologically. You can't deal with it episodically. You can't deal with it as an episode of history. You have to deal with it chronologically, okay? And to understand the existence of something, you must understand the culmination of a sequence of historical existence, of historical instances, okay? As one of my teachers, Professor Kamahaya Wata Kamane, who's in the Hidden Colors documentaries, as he talks about, he says, "To understand the existence of something, you must first understand the pre-existence of existence." Okay, so you have to understand this chronology of the history. So that's number six. We rarely make connections to the present. Right now, number seven, we tend to center on the white experience when we teach about slavery and as opposed to looking at slavery from the perspective of those who were enslaved, the Africans who were enslaved. It's also important to understand that we are, that African people had a history and a humanity and a culture, a nationality before they were put into slavery, before they were put into this condition, this system of slavery, okay? So we are descendants of Africans who were enslaved. We are descendants of Africans who were enslaved. We're allowing the condition to define the people. No, the people had a history, a culture, an identity, a spiritual system before they were put into that condition. And one of the things they recommend is to read slave narratives, okay? We tend to center on the white experience when we teach about slavery. And one of the recommendations they, they make is to teach, is to read slave narratives and teach from the slave narratives, because the slave narratives, you get to see slavery from the perspective of the enslaved Africans, okay? As opposed to from the, from those of the enslavers or from the perspective of benevolent white people, things like this. You get to, you get to see slavery from the perspective of those who were enslaved. There are studies that deal with the impact that our children learning their history has on them, on their self-esteem, their self-development, their, their academic, their academic performance. So this was an article from theroot.com, and I'm not a big fan of the root, but you know, they do have some good articles every now and then. A broken clock is right twice a day, I guess. "New Studies Find That Positive Feelings About Blackness Improve Academic Performance For Black Girls." I mean, they used to have better articles back in the day, but, yeah. Anyway, "Believing That Black Is Beautiful, An Important Motto Of Self-Acceptance And Self-Love Could Pay Major Dividends In School," a new study finds. An article in the Journal of Blacks in Higher Education focuses on a new study from Sharita Butler Barnes, a professor at Washington University in St. Louis, which finds that young African American women with, quote unquote, "strong racial identity," "strong racial identity" are more likely to be academically engaged, curious, and persistent. More likely to be academically engaged, curious, and persistent. So the survey looked at 733 African American middle and high school students, okay? Middle school and high school students, girls in three socio-economically, uh, school districts, economic school districts in the Midwest, according to the Journal of Blacks in Higher Education. So the study is entitled "Promoting Resilience Among African American Girls: Racial Identity as a Protective Factor." The study was published on the Child Development Journal website, Child Development Journal website, and found that feeling positive about being black along with feeling supported by their schools correlated with the girl's greater academic motivation. Feeling positive about being black along with feeling supported by their schools, by their schools correlated with the, with the girl's greater academic motivation. Researchers also found that feeling good about your racial identity could act as a buffer for students in hostile or negative academic environments. So Sharita Butler, Professor Sharita Butler Barnes said, quote, "Persons of color who have unhealthy racial identity beliefs tend to perform lower in school and have more symptoms of depression." Quote, "We found that feeling positive about being black and feeling support and belonging at school may be especially important for African American girls' classroom engagement and curiosity. Feeling connected to the school may also work together with racial identity attitudes to improve academic outcomes." Okay, so read this article in its entirety from theroot.com, came out January 10th, 2018. "New Studies Find That Positive Feelings About Blackness Improve Academic Performance For Black Girls," right? And we know that, you know, African American students, or especially African American girls, are like five times more likely to be suspended and disciplined than white girls, et cetera, right? So all this ties together. So this article here, blackamericaweb.com had this article in. It was a study that came out. They picked this up. This is from June 14th, 2012, "TV Kills Black Boy Self-Esteem." "TV Kills Black Boy Self-Esteem." "A New Precise And Exhaustive Year-Long Study Finds That Watching Television Regularly Distorts And Ultimately Destroys The Self-Esteem Of Young Black Boys Who Often Find Themselves Comparing One Another To The Characters They View On Air, Leaving Them Feeling Trapped And As If They Are, And As If There Are, Quote, 'Very Few Positive Life Paths' They Can Aspire To," end quote. All right, now, when I looked at, I looked at different news outlets that picked up this, picked up this study. CNN had an article about the same exact study. Because when you read, when you read the study, it talked about how the only children who, whose self-esteem was positively impacted by watching television were white boys. Okay, because in the study, it, it talked about how white boys saw themselves as being doctors and attorneys and living in mansions and all different types of things like this. They saw, it saw, it talked about how white girls saw less options, okay? From what's depicted on television, white girls saw less options. See, the, the, the article that CNN had, it said that white, the headlines were, "White Boys Positively Impacted By Watching Television." And it showed a picture of a white boy laying, laying on his stomach watching TV, and he's wearing a cape. So CNN had an article dealing with this, and they wrote an article about how it positively impacted white boy self-esteem. This one right here, this is from, well, AfricanGlobe.net had this article and other outlets have articles dealing with this, this study also. So this is a study that came out late 2012, or probably December 2012, I guess. But this article from AfricanGlobe.net, "Black Teens With Racial Pride Do Better In School." "Black Teens With Racial Pride Do Better In School." This was a joint study between, this was a joint study with the University of Pittsburgh and Harvard University. They found that African American teenagers perform better academically when their parents instill in them a sense of racial pride. African American teenagers perform better academically when their parents instill in them a sense of racial pride. A new study by the University of Pittsburgh and Harvard University shows that when parents use racial socialization, such as talking to their children or engaging in activities that promote feelings of racial knowledge, pride, and connection. Feelings of racial knowledge, pride, and connection, it offsets racial discrimination's potentially negative impact on students' academic development, like taking them to African American History Month celebrations, taking them to the African American History Museum, Dr. Keene Day celebrations, Malcolm X Day celebrations, Marcus Garvey, taking them to see documentaries and, and movies that deal with African American history, things like this. It, when parents use racial socialization such as talking to their children or engaging in activities that promote feelings of racial pride, knowledge, and connection, it offsets racial discrimination's potentially negative impact on students' academic development, all right? Okay, what else we have in here? Okay, so this is, that deals with Lepite Niango, because I go into how Lepite Niango talked about it. When she was a child living in Kenya, she wanted to be lighter-skinned, and she prayed to God each night that she would wake up and be lighter-skinned as well. All right. So one of the things that I, looking at my notes here, one of the things that I, what I wrote out here is, I've talked about this before, but when you get a high school diploma, and a high school diploma has some type of value. You need that to go to college, you need that to go to the military or GD, but specifically, a high school diploma has some type of value. And if you have to take a US history course, and that's mandatory, and you're largely, in general, learning about white history the way that most schools teach it, if you have to take a world history course, and that's mandatory, and the way most schools teach the world history courses, you're largely learning about white history, European history, et cetera. Okay, if you have to, if these classes are mandatory to take to get a degree and is not mandatory to take an African American history course, then what are you saying about the value of the people who the African American history course is about? If it's mandatory to take a US history course and is mandatory to take a world history course to graduate from high school, and you're largely learning about white history, if it's not mandatory to have an African American history course to graduate, then what does that say about the value of the people who are the subject of the African American history course? Is it tacitly saying that white people, their history is more important than African American history? How, it's, how does that cause people going through high schools in America, how does that cause them to view African Americans if it's not mandatory for you to have to learn their history to be able to graduate? All right, let me look at some of your comments here. Appreciate your definition of system helpful, still trying to be grown, and still trying to grow in being more articulate. Okay, trying to look at this comment here from, this is... Carlos, Alberta, North Carolina, Willie, okay, West Memphis, Arkansas. Okay, Michael Long said, "I have Asian friends that used to have cultural classes after school, classes that they, that their educated elders put together." Yeah, see, a lot of cultures would do that. We, 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 we have to do the same thing with the recreational centers and in the churches, teach African American history courses, period. Now, they, now they need to be taught in the high school. They need to be taught in the schools, because it should be mandatory that all children have to take at least one African American history course, okay? Not just African American children. But then there are also classes that you teach on your own, okay? Nobody has to tell Asian, Asian Americans to have courses in their own centers to teach their history. Nobody has to tell them that. Nobody has to tell Jews to do that. That's just something they do naturally. All right. Okay, I'm looking at some more of your comments here. Okay, Carlos said, "Just spoke with my younger brother three years behind me." He said, "The class was not offered after I graduated." Okay, because Carlos talked about a class that he had to take. They say, "I know, I know when my brother went to, I graduated from Cassettico High School here in Detroit. My brother graduated from the high school seven years after me. And when he went to high school, they, they had to read the book Before the Mayflower by Laron Bennett Jr." We didn't have to read that when I went to high school, okay? We didn't have to read that. And I think he had to take an African American history course, because I know they didn't have that when I went to high school, but we didn't have, we did not have to read this book. Okay, he did. It was a fantastic book. We all should read it. This is one of the books I use in the online course. All right, so you can donate to the African History Network if you like this type of information, paypal.me/8hshow, paypal.me/8hshow, or at our website, africanhistorynetwork.com. It helps us to finance our Sunday night show, keep doing the research, broadcast throughout the week, pay the bills, also helps when I have to travel out of town and speak. If you want me to do a presentation for your group or organization, email me at customerservice@afghanhistorynetwork.com, Also, African American business owners, email us at customerservice@afghanhistorynetwork.com, africanhistorynetwork.com. We'll let you know how you can advertise with the African History Network. We have a few more slots left. Okay, so let's see, we have some new advertisers. KarlMarshall.com. Visit, if you're looking, if you're looking for a newer used car, visit KarlMarshall.com. We're going to post a link here as well. Look in the description for the link also for Karl Marshall. Karl Marshall will help, will help you find and negotiate buying a new vehicle. They have 100,000 new and used cars from dealers. Karl Marshall, you shop, we negotiate. You shop, we negotiate. Okay, so we'll post a link here for Karl Marshall. And then a lot of people are looking to invest, and they want to learn more about the stuff. looking to invest and they want to learn more about the stock market, learn about investing. Uh, TheProfitRoom dot com is a education company that teaches you about the stock market, trading, foreign exchange markets, futures, et cetera. And they specialize in uh providing uh mentorship programs as well as day trading, okay? And they have programs that are designed for beginners. They teach individuals how to create generational wealth through trading and investing in the financial markets, okay? You may have seen the article from BlackNews dot com uh about The Profit Room entitled, "The First Black-Owned Day Trading Company Of Its Kind Is Teaching Courses on How To Profit From The Stock Market." Visit their website, TheProfitRoom dot com, TheProfitRoom dot com uh for more information, right? Okay. Alright, so follow us uh on our Facebook fan page, the African History Network, turn on the notifications so you know when we go live. Follow us on our YouTube channel, Michael M. Hotep, I M H O T E P, uh, as well on YouTube and uh turn on the notifications so you know when we go live there as well, right? Okay, and then we're on Sundays, nine PM to eleven PM Eastern Standard Time, the African History Network Show. So we'll be on uh this Sunday also now. So some Sundays, uh, because I know uh for the holidays, things like that, for Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday. The station will be shut down, so I'll be broadcasting from home, but we'll still be on Sundays, nine PM to eleven PM Eastern Standard Time, we broadcast uh on our Facebook fan page, the African History Network. And some Sundays, I'm in the radio station at nine ten AM, the super station. If they're not playing Major League Baseball, if they're not playing uh the NFL games, because we pick up some NFL games and I know they'll be closed for the holidays also, so we'll still be on live, so just tune in. Sundays, nine PM to eleven PM Eastern Standard Time for the African History Network Show. And then if you missed the show, you can watch it here on Facebook, the African History Network, or also uh here on YouTube, uh, Michael M. Hotep on YouTube. And we have the audio podcasts of our shows and broadcasts also, uh, so at AfricanHistoryNetwork dot com, right on the homepage, click on Listen To Podcasts. And for um our advertisers as well, we take your thirty-second to sixty-second commercial, put into the audio podcast of our various broadcasts, and we're on eight different podcast platforms, Blog Talk Radio, Cast Box, Acast, FM Player, tune in. So we're on eight different podcast platforms, so I have almost a thousand uh audio podcasts of our various broadcasts going back to two thousand ten. So wherever you get your podcasts from, search for the African History Network, but uh also go to AfricanHistoryNetwork dot com, right on the homepage, click on Listen To Podcasts. It takes you to our Blog Talk Radio page, BlogTalkRadio dot com forward slash the African History Network Show, we have almost uh thousand uh podcasts there. Okay, uh, what's the name of the wealth building platform? Yeah, that is uh TheProfitRoom uh dot com, okay, we'll post the link here. ProfitRoom dot com, okay, and they have uh classes as well that they offer, so check that out. Also, let them know you found out about this from the African History Network. Alright, and let me post a link here, SPOCenter dot org. Uh, search for Teaching Hard History, American Slavery. Teaching Hard History, American Slavery, you can download the uh you can download the um, this study that I talked about as well, Teaching Hard History, American Slavery from the Southern Probably Law Center. Alright, look, hey, after getting out of here, remember the African History Network, we focus on educating, empowering and inspiring people of African descent throughout that, throughout the diaspora and around the world. Because right now it's corrects wrong behavior, what you do for yourself, what you do to yourself and what you allow other people to do to you and get away with is based upon what you think about yourself, what you think about yourself is based upon what you have been taught about yourself. What you've been taught about yourselves is based upon everything you've read, heard and seen about yourself. Be sure to register for the online course, uh, courses that I teach, Ancient Kemet, the Moors and the Mahafa. Understanding the Transatlantic Slave Trade, what they did teach you in school. So these are good resources for you to use in your home, for you to use with children, uh, et cetera. Remember, right now it's corrects wrong behaviors, not over two, we win, Wakanda forever, and we'll talk to you next time, peace.